Good evening, everyone. I'd ask everyone that's able to rise, Councilmember Scott Kwame is going to lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, if you could unmute yourself.
As we bring our concerns to you, you would hear them, that you would remember us. You tell us your word to not fear, and that we can bring all our concerns to you. We bring those fears and concerns to you tonight. Many of us have people that we know that may be sick, or that may have concerns with their business or their job. There's many fears surrounding us these days, and we pray, Lord, that you would comfort us and bring us peace. We thank you that we can look to you for the peace that only you can provide. And we thank you for your grace. We ask that you'd be with us tonight as we meet, be with the leaders of our city, our mayor, our administrator, and all the members of the city staff. We pray that as we serve the people of our town and of our state, that you would give us the guidance and the wisdom we need to serve well, and as you would have us serve. We pray these things tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Scott. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, Monday, May 4, 2020, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Here.
Arnessen.
Here.
Gusseson.
Here.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
This is a question.
Fish?
Ask.
Heggberg.
Here.
Kwame.
Here.
Ruffer.
Here.
And then, did we miss Jim Fish? Is Fish out there?
All right, we have a quorum. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all, most of you. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, for any additions or corrections, changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, good evening. We do have one additional item this evening, and you've got it sent out to you this morning. It's a request for funds from the Fergus Falls Public School District for fireworks display. We'll put that under New Business at the end of the agenda, so that'll be item number three under New Business. And then, I just want to remind everyone to have their microphones muted when they're not talking, and then, when you are talking, make sure that you're unmuted. I've seen a few mouths moving, and we can't hear you here in the room. So keep them muted when you're not talking, and make sure you unmute them when you're ready to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And with that, I would entertain a motion approving the amended agenda.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Sorry. We need to do roll call. My fault. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arnessen.
Yes.
Gusseson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
All right. That motion is approved. Under public hearings this evening, we have a public hearing for Public Improvement 5956, which is the Burlington Avenue Street project improvement project, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro, to give us some background before we open the public hearing. Good evening, Brian. He's muted at the moment, it looks like. There we go. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening.
If you could introduce that Burlington Avenue improvement before we open the hearing, that would be great.
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, you bet, Brian. Go ahead, loud and clear.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Yes, good evening. This is the public, prior to opening the public hearing, this is the preliminary assessment hearing for Public Improvement 5271, and also CP 5956. This is a 2020 Burlington Avenue Street Unitary Improvement Project, extending from Landoff Avenue to East Mount Faith, and a portion of Glenway to the east. Like I noted, this is a preliminary project hearing. It's a reconstruction project. Today is the hearing date, which is May 5. We're proposing an interest rate not to exceed of 16% at this time, and the assessment here duration of 15 years. The unit price individual notices were mailed out to all the abutting properties. We estimated unit price per legal foot of $91.28. Also included in the package is the complete breakdown of this project. We are still working on the schedule. That's also been noted on there, but this is the first step. I'm requesting you open the public hearing for this project for those who desire to be heard. At the conclusion, any questions and answers, I have the recommendation on hand is to order the plant, projects, plans, and specifications.
Thank you, Brian. And with that, I will open the public hearing for Public Improvement Number 5956. Anyone wishing to speak? I did by yourselves. See no one. We do have two public letters that were received on this project that we would like to enter into the record, so I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, to summarize those for us.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members. I'm gonna, they're both short letters, so I'm just gonna read them in their entirety, if you don't mind. We received comments from Daryl Albertson, 524 North Burlington Avenue. He, and I quote, "I did have a phone conversation with Brian today, Friday, May 1. I did ask questions concerning taxes on the park side. I also asked about our driveway access during street improvement repairs this summer. Brian did answer those concerns, and I do approve the street improvement plans." Again, that was Daryl Albertson, 524 North Burlington. The other comments were from Dennis and Audrey Emmon, located at 808 Glenway. They say, "Brian, thanks for the update on Glenway improvements. I appreciate the information. We are in full support of the effort to upgrade the road surface. Also, the larger water main, along with the curb stop on our property, will improve our water pressure. My understanding is that there will not be any curb and gutter on Glenway, but since Glenway is legally an alley, we concur with that idea. I'm planning on coming to the public meeting on May 4, but with the restrictions on group gatherings due to COVID-19 issues, there may not be seating." Again, that was Dennis and Audrey Emmon, 808 Glenway, and those are the two comments that we received prior to the hearing this evening.
Thank you, Andrew. And seeing no one else indicating they would like to speak to this on Zoom, I will close the public hearing. It's back to the council. We are looking for a resolution ordering the plans and specifications as authorized, and authorizing the advertisement of bids for Public Improvement 5956. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Tom, second. Thank you, Tom. Discussion, questions, comments from the council? See none? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnessen.
Yes.
Gusseson.
Yes.
Okay. Hicks.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. Item under E, awarding of bids. We will look for a resolution this evening, awarding bid for Public Improvement 9347, the airport runway lighting replacement project to Otter Electric. And again, I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Your Honor, on Thursday, April 23, SEH bids were opened. We received a total of four bids at the time of the bid opening. Otter Electric was submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $313,956. The engineer's estimate was noted to be $460,000. SEH has reviewed the documentation and have attached a word recommendation letter that's also included in your packet. Because moving, this is a state airport grant program with federal funds, we also provided a professional services agreement for construction administration in the amount of $85,100. This includes all services from service staking to final project closeout, along with the subconsult of bargain engineering services for electrical inspection. Once, if approved, since all the construction costs are known, myself and SEH will be completing the final grant application and submit to the states for an UFA for an agreement. Based on previous airport project schedules, I anticipate receiving a grant, hopefully, in August, if not earlier. Once we receive this grant, we'll be presenting to the city council for final approval. So at this time, I'm requesting a word to construction service contract to Otter Electric in the amount of $313,956. I want to note that representative from SEH is also in attendance through video too as well, if there's any further questions in regards to this project at this time.
Thank you, Brian. With that, we'll have discussion, but first, we looked, would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Brent.
Thank you, Brent. Discussion. Anyone have any questions or comments for Brian?
Other than to...
Go ahead, Anthony.
Other than to say that this is a needed kind of action, there's a lot of challenges with the lighting out at the airport, so it's a good project for us to complete.
Sure. Thank you, Anthony. Anything else from the council? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Arnessen.
Yes.
Gusseson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
That resolution, nush, nush, is approved.
So, Anthony's getting paid well.
All right. Item number under F, petitions and communications. We had asked our public work, or I'm sorry, our public city engineer to reach out to the businesses and property owners affected by the roundabout and the changes to Fur Avenue proposed by the county, so I would call on our city, I'd call on Brian Uvaro, the city engineer, to give us a summary of those comments received.
20th meeting, the city council presented this preliminary conceptual redesign of the Fur Union intersection. I also included some of the preliminary sheets provided by the county. Following that meeting, the next day, the county prepared a letter and mailed it to the abutting properties where this would be impacted. I personally reached out to the business owner of Washington Girl and Rhodey Insurance Services to discuss this project in a little bit more detail. Last page of your package show, I have it noted as a comments sheet, 5420. With those, it pretty much have summarized in the bullets, board items of summation of all the responses received from the owners and city staff as well. We can certainly go through some of these comments and everything, but the biggest thing noted from the business owner was, in comparison to what the county proposed, was limitation of accesses. That was one of the most noted comments from these owners, amongst a few other things. I invited a county engineer too as well for an attendance, but based on some of these comments that we've seen, we do know, as presented, there will have to be modifications at a minimum to what's proposed, and summarized within that comments sheet. So I'm requesting any further comments. I did invite, as well, some of the business owners to attend, if we'd like to speak with those and get their input as well.
Thank you, Brian. I've read the comments, and I guess my question to you, Brian, is, it would seem to me, like, I don't know what, if there's right-of-way, or if there's property that the county needs from the city as this project, but in order for me to support it, we would have to meet the requests of the property owners, and have you had conversations with the county about their ability to meet those requests?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. We have, I've had some conversations since then, in particular with the county and the access controls. We feel there, we could accommodate all of, from the business owners themselves. However, you know, I also noted on, from the last meeting, I noted a little bit clarity as far as traffic control for Fur Avenue. If you note, this new Union Avenue realignment to meet Fur Avenue at a perpendicular standpoint, they were proposing controlling that with a stop sign. And then, also want to note to the intersection to the east, where it is right now, Fur Avenue meets Union Avenue, that would be removing that three-way and providing stop signs for north and southbound entering this intersection, along with uncontrolled east-westbound movements with this. But yes, we do feel we can, but we, I do believe there's more, we'd need to go through a little bit more detail on prior to moving forward with additional changes.
Sure. So just before I let any other council members voice any questions or concerns, just let us know the process. So you've taken these comments into consideration, the county has them. Do we anticipate that they're gonna come back with a final plan that we would sign off on? Is that the, is that the plan?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. In addition to what I've provided there, and based on any further comments following this discussion here, I would be meeting with the county to go through all these comments and see what ideas we can present that would accommodate if all the business needs, as well as the city's needs in regards to this project. We've already indicated that maybe as little as doing striping modifications. However, yes, I would anticipate visiting with the county following this, and putting together a more formalized plan to produce back to the council.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. With that, I know there are at least, there is at least one business owner on the call, on the, in the meeting today, but before we get any additional comments from Mickey, any questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, I've got some.
All right, Brent, go ahead.
Basically, unless something drastically changed, I'm not in favor of this. Basically, I've spoken with a few of the business owners in the area, and basically, even if you give them their driveways back, you're ending up with problems with people only being able to vacate in one direction. And then, basically, with this whole thing going on, it seems like the only one who's benefiting out of this is gonna be the county, because the county is gonna be able to take that road and make it a non-stop thoroughfare right through a residential area. And I do believe that there's more traffic coming up on Union than there is coming on Freiberg, and now both of our entrances, the one by Casey's, which is open, and the one that carries us onto Fur is open, and now we are having to stop, and I do believe the traffic that we get is going to start backing up down Union Avenue and blocking these business owners even further. So at this present point, unless, I mean, and they still haven't even corrected the problem with the access into those apartment complexes up on the top from both directions. So at the way things are going right now, I mean, unless there's some drastic changes, I can't stand behind this in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. Other, pardon me, other comments from council members? Anthony, did you have?
Yeah. I somewhat concur with Brent. I think that having controlled north stop sign, you know, both on Union, on both kind of Unions as a end to Fur, and then having basically a three-for-all going east-westbound on Fur, is, it's gonna be very difficult to get out of Union onto Fur, particularly in peak times, you know, where the vast majority of traffic today is flowing, you know, from Union onto Fur. So I'm the same. I don't see, I don't see we're gaining anything with what we're doing. The amount of money that this is gonna cost and what we're gonna spend, I don't see an improvement. I just, I just see it's, you know, we're putting lipstick on a pig, basically.
Thanks, Anthony. Other comments from council members?
Justin has his hand.
Justin, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just got a question on how this process all came about, and just a little background. They briefly touched on that last time, but, you know, I travel those roads quite often, and other than early morning, I don't ever see traffic being an issue. You know, heading westbound on that Union-Fur connection, you know, there's issues right away in the morning with school routes, but I don't see why there's a need to change this intersection to the tune of the amount they're talking about expanding at this time. So I'd just like to know a little more of why the, why this was identified as a need.
Thanks, Justin. Brian, did you want to comment on that? Andrew?
Chuck Roddy's on here, too.
Oh.
Yes, we can, we can, from the county engineer Chuck Roddy. Well, yeah, this is kind of an interim step, as we mentioned, from the roundabout study that was completed and accepted a few months ago and everything as an option. We have identified, trying to look for some interim solutions with this, but this is a conceptual preliminary design that we're looking, the county more so, looking to proceed with, hence why they would be requesting. They are proposing to fund this project as well at no cost to city. However, like I said, these are all comments summarized right here. They would have to be acquiring some portion of property or realignment of the property. There's some few other subtle features that we would have to, but the biggest thing is access to as well, but I think we do have to, my recommendation, go back to the drawing board, for lack of better terms, and see what we can present.
Thanks, Brian. Scott, I see, has his hand up. Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to not necessarily speak in favor of this, or even against it, but just as I understood that when it was presented before, the county believes that the main traffic is east and west, and even though we see a lot of traffic north and south coming off of and onto Union, I believe that the presentation we saw indicated the main traffic was east and west, and that was the reason for wanting to make this alignment pretty free-flowing that direction. So I understand the question. I don't know that it's necessarily worthwhile, as far as spending the money now, but on the other hand, it's a county project, not a city project, and yet it's still, you know, we're a part of the county, so I understand that. But again, the last comment I'd make is, whatever there's a change in some kind of a traffic layout like this, it just takes some adjustment, and if this happens, whether it goes this way, or whether it gets modified into a full-blown roundabout, people adjust to it. You know, at one time, the road around Lake Alice was two-way, and now it's a one-way drive. You know, people adjust to it. You figure out that I gotta go around a block, and I can't just turn here because it's a one-way, that kind of thing. People figure it out, so I wouldn't think it's the worst thing ever, but if I was one of those businesses, I might be a little more likely to squawk, and I can understand that. It just seems like any restriction is maybe just not necessary right now. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Scott. So, well, I'm gonna ask Mickey if he had any additional comments beyond the letter that was submitted, but let's, we'll just, I guess, look for Brian to discuss with the county, those comments that have been received, and if they have a revised plan that they want to bring back before the city council. Again, if there's any jurisdiction, or if there's right-of-way, or land acquisition that's needed for us to vote on, we can do it at that time. Mickey, I know you've joined us this evening. Did you have any, Mickey Rhodey from Rhodey Insurance, did you have any additional comments beyond the letter that you submitted?
No, I think as long as everybody got a copy of the letter that my next-door neighbor, Mr. Rick Stock, and I did together, we would like that to obviously be part of the record and part of our disagreement with what the county would like to do, obviously, as you guys have seen here on, you know, what's on the screen. The county would like to go from the two businesses having three driveways, one being shared, and then one of them being mine, one being Rick's, down to two businesses sharing one entrance and one exit, which we think is highly, highly unreasonable. So, no, I appreciate being part of the meeting tonight, and again, as long as my letter along with Rick has gone into record, that's what we're looking for.
Thanks, Mickey. With that, we'll just, will, Brian, you have what you need from the comments from the council and from the business owners, and we'll look for your guidance in a future council meeting as to what the county wants to do moving forward.
Yes, yes, Your Honor. I believe so. The one other thing I'd like to point out is the addition of a turn lane to the Government Services Center. I have not received any comments with, in regards to that, and I'm not generally opposed to that, but everything else further to the east, I believe I have a good understanding. Obviously, as it stands right now, it's not acceptable, and if the county wants to pursue this more, we're gonna have to do some more detailed refinement and present it back to the council at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Moving along to the consent agenda, this evening, there are eight items on the consent agenda. If any one on the council would like to have any item removed to discuss individual, we can do that at this point. Seeing no one indicating?
Can I remove, can I remove number eight?
Yep.
Ben?
Yep. You bet. Item number eight's been removed. Anyone else? Not seeing any? I would look for a resolution approving the other seven consent agenda items.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnessen.
Yes.
Gusseson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a motion approving the updated agreement with the I-94 BMX group. Anthony, did you have a question or comment on that one?
Yeah, I didn't see it in my packet, so I wondered what other changes.
We'll call on Public Works Director Guy Taylor.
Okay, sure. Yeah, Councilman Hicks, the changes, the picnic shelter structure that is there in the location where they're gonna build the track, they had initially thought that that would not be usable and be kind of in their way, but now, as they've laid the track out, they thought it would actually be of benefit to them, and they've proposed that they would enclose the structure, make it look like our other park buildings out there, and use it for their registration and concessions, and then some storage.
At their expense.
At their expense, yes, correct.
Yes. All right.
All right. Thank you, Guy. With that, I make the motion to, a resolution to accept it.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Anthony. We have a motion, and we'll call for the roll.
Thompson.
Fish.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. And that motion, I'm sorry. Uh, under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance two-eighth series, which is the vacation of Joanna Drive and Lauren Drive. That has been before the council two weeks ago. Um, we've had a first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. Seeing none. Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
Gesserson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. And that motion, I'm sorry. Uh, under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance two-eighth series, which is the vacation of Joanna Drive and Lauren Drive. That has been before the council two weeks ago. Um, we've had a first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. Seeing none. Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
Gesserson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. And that motion, I'm sorry. Uh, under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance two-eighth series, which is the vacation of Joanna Drive and Lauren Drive. That has been before the council two weeks ago. Um, we've had a first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. Seeing none. Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
Gesserson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. And that motion, I'm sorry. Uh, under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance two-eighth series, which is the vacation of Joanna Drive and Lauren Drive. That has been before the council two weeks ago. Um, we've had a first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. Seeing none. Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
Gesserson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
That resolution, that ordinance is approved. Uh, under presentation of claims tonight, we have, uh, claims in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eight-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars and thirty-one cents. If we have any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I will, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you Justin, thank you Brent. Roll call please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
Gesserson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Higbert.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There are no board committee department reports, or reports from staff and administrative offices. There is no old or unfinished business. There are three items under new business, the first being, uh, public hearings process, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremsef, to address that. Good evening Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor members. I'm actually gonna turn it over to council member Hicks. He requested that this, uh, item be added to the agenda based on some comments and questions we received after a planning commission meeting last week, and I think he's got, uh, questions for the city attorney for clarification. So, I will turn it over to council member Hicks.
All right Anthony, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, one of the issues, obviously during this unprecedented time that we face, um, it's extremely difficult for residents to truly be informed about, obviously, items that sometimes appear on the agenda, um, particularly when it relates to planning, um, plotting, and obviously the, you know, the governor has issued a stay-at-home order, and so therefore, technically, a resident that is not in a, uh, role where they're meant to just go to work and, and come home again, can't really go to council offices to view documents. And, um, I, I did speak with Andrew about the ability to just postpone anything that has major ramifications on residents, you know, vis-a-vis kind of plotting or planning. And obviously, he, he, um, informed me that, obviously, there are statutes that still have limitations about time, that we have to process applications that's, uh, obviously a business or a, a resident gives us. And I actually think it's contradictory of the governor to, on one hand, tell people to stay at home, you know, to protect their health, but then he's effectively taking away their rights to actually be able to kind of understand what's going on in their neighborhood, and to be able to go to a meeting and voice their opinion. And as much as we've adopted a certain amount of electronics to assist us, as demonstrated here tonight, it really is not the most user-friendly, uh, scenario. You know, there's a tremendous amount of echo, you know, and, uh, the ability to speak freely and clearly doesn't exist. And so, obviously, my request was that we should postpone anything that had a public decision that were, that had sort of ramifications for neighborhoods, but I understand that's not possible, and, uh, Andrew was gonna talk to the city attorney to, to clarify that for me.
Go ahead. Thank you. Anthony, Ralph, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you Anthony. I, I share your frustrations, and so do, uh, many others in the state of Minnesota. Uh, the governor's ramifications with the, uh, stay-at-home order, I mean, they're, they're finding things that, uh, need amendments, they need flexibility. Unfortunately, for, um, the variances and other zoning-related things, that they haven't quite, uh, determined that flexibility and relaxing time limits are, uh, something that we can do yet. Uh, I know there's some talk about it, uh, but it just hasn't been enacted. There's been, flexibility has been granted to attorneys for filing deadlines, and statute of limitations, and those types of things. And so, it's, I think it's working its way across the board, uh, towards other areas that it's, puts the kind, the time constraints of, have, uh, have been difficult to comply with. Unfortunately, we're not there yet, and, uh, the state law drives, uh, what we must do, uh, and the sixty-day rule is actually a very hard rule, uh, and it's, it's meant to be a very hard rule. The violation of the sixty-day rule is meant to enforce, or to allow, or to force cities to make decisions, and, uh, otherwise, as you know, the sixty-day rule, if you don't make a decision within sixty days, uh, the application is deemed accepted, so, uh, and the ramifications are very, very harsh. So, yes, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree that it's, the, the public process is, is, is difficult, uh, it's, it's cumbersome, uh, it's, it's, it's the best that we have right now, and, uh, we, we try to hold these public hearings, and try to give the public an opportunity to participate in these hearings, uh, but unfortunately, we still have to make decisions, uh, within sixty days until that rule changes, and, and, uh, I'll keep you posted. Uh, I, there, there are rumblings that, you know, other cities are having these same concerns, uh, relating, uh, moving forward on, uh, some of these applications, and, uh, you know, if, uh, if, if there's any applications that may be, uh, very controversial, I mean, it'll be important to identify those early on, so that we can accommodate, uh, a process that includes, uh, as much participation as we can possibly, uh, provide. So, thank you for that, and, uh, I'll let you know if I hear more.
Thank you Ralph.
Thank you Ralph.
All right. Anthony, are you good with that? Did you have anything else?
Yeah, maybe the next time you talk to the governor, you can ask him.
I'll do that. Item number two, uh, is an HRA Permanent Supportive Housing Project. We have Michael Olson from the HRA on the, on the, with us, and, um, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and ask him to, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Michael for a presentation. Good evening Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, city staff, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, provide an update on a project that we've been working on here for about the last eighteen months. Um, I have a number of, of, uh, project partners on the line with me tonight, and so that I don't take, uh, any of their portions of presentation, I'm going to turn this over to Ottertail County Human Service Director Deb Schustrom, and, uh, let her kick off the presentation, and I'll be back with you, uh, very shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you Michael.
Good evening Deb.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, appreciate your time, um, to be able to present some information to you about, uh, permanent supportive housing development that we have been working on, as Michael said, for about eighteen months, uh, maybe even a touch longer than that. During the twenty-eighteen legislative session, uh, there were dollars through legislation for bonding for permanent supportive housing for people with mental health disorders. And we actually, uh, the county started having some conversation about the gaps that we have in housing at that time. And then in the fall of twenty-eighteen, Margaret Williams, who supervises our behavioral health unit, and myself, met with, uh, Clay County Director Rhonda Porter and a supervisor, as well as Dara Lee from Clay County HRA, to talk about supportive housing, because they have two developments in their county. Had that conversation, that led to an organizational meeting in January of twenty-nineteen, where, uh, Michael from the HRA and a number of other potential partners came to talk about this, and to talk about the gap, and how we have this, um, this missing piece in our county for people with mental health disorders who really need some support in their housing, to maintain their housing, to have stable housing. Uh, they don't really need foster care, uh, they don't need, uh, facilities, but they do need something to support them, so that they can be as independent as possible, and as involved in our community as possible, without landing in the emergency room or in our county jail. And so, with that, we brought some folks together in January, had a conversation, there was a lot of interest, and since then, um, we've had regular meetings, and we've met with, um, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency almost exactly a year ago now, to talk about what that would look like, and what we would need, and, uh, that's brought us to today, um, through a demand study that was very recently completed, that supported this notion that we had, that we need this type of service. Uh, Margaret Williams from our office did an informal, uh, very non-scientific research project, in talking with case managers who do adult mental health case management, and asked them, if we had this today, how many of the people do you work with do you think would benefit from this service? And what the result of that very non-scientific survey was, is twenty-nine, and the demand study has shown that that's, um, pretty close to the number. So, we've got that demand study as well, and, um, it's being finalized now, it's in draft format. So, with that, um, you can see on the slide, the, the information and some of the timeline, but we also have with us tonight Liz Koopola from Mahavi Atwa, and, uh, Kate Coughlin from Lutheran Social Services, who will speak a little bit to what exactly supportive housing is, and what the need is in our area. So, I'll turn this to Liz next. Thank you.
Thanks Deb. My name's Liz Koopola with Mahavi Atwa Community Action Partnership, and my job here is just to give you a very high-level overview on what permanent supportive housing is. And so, as Deb mentioned, this is housing with support services attached right on-site. And so, it still works as a tenancy. The tenants pay a portion of their income in rent, um, the tenants are still expected to, you know, they clean their own units, you know, that sort of thing, they're tenants, but the services that come with it are on-site as much as possible, so we have intensive case managers come on-site, go into their units, provide mental health services, or employment services, um, health services, you know, whatever kind of services it takes to get them back on their feet. Um, it's called permanent supportive housing, but permanent only means that it's not a set time for how long someone can stay there. And so, some people we see who have significant mental health issues paired with very low IQ, might end up staying there for a couple of decades. Other folks who maybe had onset of schizophrenia, or, you know, and, and had some setbacks in their life, it might take a couple of years for them to sort of, um, get stabilized, and, and then learn how to work in a new normal. Um, and then in many cases, they want to leave and create a new space for somebody else, because they're not interested in that intensive case management when it's no longer needed. Um, and so, the services lead to, um, the studies are, lead to increased housing stability. What we see with this population, the homeless population, and folks with significant mental health issues, um, without services on-site, they're, um, they're moving from place to place to place. And so, this housing stability gives them kind of a space to work on their, on their other issues, and, um, leads to, you know, whatever level of employment a person can, can work on, it's proven to be cost-effective, that, as Deb mentioned, because they're not using emergency rooms as their primary care, or some of those other very important, or very expensive services. Um, so that's just a high-level overview. I wanna pass it over to Kate Coughlin from LSS to talk about local needs.
Thank you Liz. Good evening Kate.
Good evening, um, thanks for having us. So, I'm the Director of Behavioral Health for Lutheran Social Service, um, in the northwest region of the state, which includes Ottertail County, and some of the services that allow, um, folks to feel supported in this type of housing include mental health services, because adults who are placed in permanent supportive housing are diagnosed with a severe persistent mental health concern. Oftentimes, these folks are people who are going to be utilizing, like Liz said, um, emergency rooms and crisis services, but by providing on-site support, like LSS would be committed to doing, or other service providers that we have involved with our, um, collaborative, we'd be able to work with these clients to provide them that day-to-day support, to ensure that they're meeting their goals. Um, the case management is very intensive, we do employment services, money management, education, there's lots of different opportunities for them to learn and grow in this environment that provides them a safe and stable housing-first model.
Thank you. Thank you Kate, thank you Liz, thank you Deb. Um, Michael, is it back to you? Uh, we're not looking for-
Back to me.
We're not looking for actions this evening, is that correct?
We're, we are not looking for action this evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, uh, wanted to get this out in front of everyone, and, uh, again, my thanks for the time here, Liz, Deb, Kate, thank you so much for taking the time tonight to, uh, to help with the presentation. I, we couldn't get through this without you. Um, I wanna take a little time tonight and, and run through the rest of the slides here, and talk a little bit about the application process, and what this project might look like if, if we can produce a successful application. Uh, if you take a look at the slide that's up right now, the, the site plan, uh, what we've been working with city staff on right now, and, uh, with Prairie Design, and Horace North Dakota, and Beyond Shelter, uh, as a developer, um, we've, the HRA owns just over three acres of land, um, to the, uh, north and east of our existing office space here. And so, we've been working with the city to locate the plan as it's drawn right now, and as you can see, we, we have kind of a phase one and a phase two development here. So, uh, one of the applications has some scoring criteria, that if we're twenty-four units or under, we can perhaps, uh, score a little higher, which may help us with, with funding this project. And, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at, uh, twenty-four one-bedroom units as a phase one, uh, with a possible phase-two development of, of maybe up to twelve, uh, family units of maybe, uh, two- or three-bedroom, uh, type properties there. It, it gives us some, some longer-term flexibility with other development options on this site. Um, you, you may notice, uh, next slide please Lynn. Um, it's a little hard to see here, but if you notice just to the south of, of where the parking lot is mapped on this GIS overlay, uh, there's three different lines that run through here. We've got water lines, uh, sewer lines, and storm sewer lines, and, uh, part of our building location and development in the existing site is to try and stay, uh, away from those lines to the, to the best extent possible, so that if there are, um, any future reworks or, or, uh, peaks in the lines, or anything like that, we're not dealing with, with, uh, large disruption to a parking lot, or, or, or to a building. And of course, uh, we maybe wouldn't want to, to, uh, have to relocate those lines if possible, uh, just to avoid the extra, uh, construction development costs. So, so this is kind of a, a first run at, at a location, and of course, we would continue working with city staff to come up with a final determination and, and approval before we get much further down the trail here. Next slide please. Uh, we can jump past this one, we talked about this. Next slide please. Okay, um, as it sits right now, again, we're, uh, we're, we're looking at twenty-four one-bedroom units in a three-story development. Uh, the first floor plan here is, is mostly community space and office space. Uh, I think there are seven office spaces, two conference rooms, a community space, a flexible classroom area, a food pantry area, some file storage, um, this will be a secure entrance building, staffed twenty-four-seven, um, so, main floor, uh, no dwellings. Uh, second and third floors would be, uh, twelve units per floor, uh, laundry located on each floor, elevator, et cetera. Uh, next slide please. So, we talked about, uh, secure entrance, of course, one of the, one of the things that we wanna try to help with, uh, with some of our, uh, perhaps behavioral issues is, is, um, we don't necessarily want, uh, some folks to have the wrong outside influences, and so, uh, having a secure entrance and, and staff there can certainly help, um, folks manage some of their, uh, outside influences. Uh, we talked about central laundry, uh, spaces for service providers, uh, food pantry, classroom, et cetera. Uh, our current floor plan has each apart- our perhaps behavioral issues is we don't necessarily want some folks to have the wrong outside influences. And so, having a secure entrance and staff there can certainly help folks manage some of their outside influences. We talked about central laundry, spaces for service providers, food pantry, classroom, et cetera. Our current floor plan has each apartment as a one-bedroom unit, just over 500 square feet per unit. Next slide, please. And here we have just front elevations provided in a couple of different color schemes. This is just a rendering from our architect to give us an idea of what things might look like, color schemes based on some of the neighboring properties so that we can hope to blend in well with our surroundings. And I think it's a very attractive building, and I'm very excited about the process. So, if we could go back to that first slide quickly, I'll mention a couple of things, and then I'm going to pass this over to Joe with Beyond Shelter. Our applications for the Federal Home Loan Bank are due at the end of May and mid-June, early July for Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. So, over the next month or two, we'll be working through this application process. If we're funded, we'll be working to finalize plans, go out for bid with the hopes to begin construction in the summer of 2021. And we would expect that a 12-month construction period, meaning occupancy, could start late summer or fall of 2022. With that, Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you, and perhaps you can talk a little bit more about the application process.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Joe Wizzo. I'm with Beyond Shelter. We're a regional affordable developer right in Fargo, North Dakota. We've done, we do only affordable housing in the Minnesota, North Dakota area. This housing project is, like Michael said, is going to bring 24 one-bedroom units for those that are facing both health and homeless situations. We have been working through the pre-development process right now, moving into the financial applications, the first being with the Federal Home Loan Bank, their Affordable Housing Program, and trying to tap into that resource for about $1 million. And then, again, with the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency under their Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, we're looking to gain tax credits to sell to a syndicator investor and also gain the housing infrastructure bonds, the taxes at deferred bonds. Both those applications are due this spring, early summer, and we expect to get commitments in December of this year. Like Michael said, it'll be about, it'll take us a few months to get plans in order and get all the players involved to start construction in summer, early fall with a 12-month contract so that we can open doors in 2022. Yes, the project's extremely exciting. We love doing this kind of work and helping out the communities like Fergus Falls. And Beyond Shelter is here through construction and compliance and initial lease-up, but we'll be walking every step of the way with the HRA and will be part of the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Michael, Deb, Liz, and Kate for the information. Like we said, there is no action needed this evening. However, I will give the council members an opportunity to ask questions or also an opportunity to get further questions answered from staff or from Michael and his staff at the HRA before we, I assume, would need to take action on this before a final application is submitted. So, with that, are there any questions this evening from the council?
I have a question, Howard.
Go ahead, Tom.
Actually, not a question. Just wanted to thank the team that's been working on this. I've had the privilege of working with them for the last several months. I got to go along with Andrew and tour the facilities up in Moorhead and was pretty impressed with what I saw, and I really think that would be a big win for a lot of different entities in Fergus Falls. Lake Region Healthcare has been approached to be a partner in this project, and we're currently evaluating that opportunity. So, just, yeah, I want to say thank you to the team that's working on it and express my support for it.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Scott, did you have a question?
If this project was to go forward, would there be any significant cost to the city? I know as they were making the presentation, I listed several sources of funding, but I didn't hear that the city was included. So, apparently, we're being informed about it, and that's fine. But will we be asked to provide any funding for this or anything outside of just whatever it takes to make the utilities work?
Michael, did you want to respond to that?
Question, Scott. Thank you. At this time, we don't anticipate any financial requests from the city. And yes, it's very likely that we'll be in front of city staff or committees to talk about possible variance requests for designing parking spaces or ultimately for building location. But at this point, what I see requests from the city would be, you know, pretty typical steps with site planning and utilities, et cetera. Joe, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, we're not asking for any financial obligation from the city. We do encourage the city's support as we move along as a vital partner in the project.
Thank you, Joe. Seeing no other questions from the council, I'd like to say--
I do have one.
All right, Brent, go ahead.
Now, I'm in support of this project. I do believe it's needed. I have spoken with the previous person who was a chargeover at A Place To Belong, and the people there were very great and everything else. But just like any housing project, are there any background checks and will preference be given to local people in need of this service? Or, you know, unless, because otherwise, even with mental health illness, you do end up with a certain amount that are problem, that do have bad backgrounds, and other counties like to shift them around. I don't want to turn around where we cannot take care of our own people and some of the other counties maybe to decide to start shipping some of their problems over in our direction. So, that would be my only concern as far as, you know, are there requirements to be able to come into these facilities, and will the locals be given preferential treatment over, you know, consideration over people being shipped in from other counties, as far as being able to take care of our own people first?
Thank you, Brent. Michael, any comments on that?
Michael, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Yeah, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Go ahead.
Liz, go ahead.
Brent, great question. And so, the way we've seen this work in other permanent supportive housing facilities is there's an application process, and through that application process, we ask people to select what county and what city they'd like to live in. And just that process itself generally has local folks identify Fergus Falls. Otherwise, like if they're from somewhere else, they likely won't identify Fergus Falls. And so, that's a first level of trying to narrow it down. If there weren't Fergus Falls or Otter Tail County folks, you know, depending on who ends up funding this, you know, we'd take other folks. But what we've seen is it's primarily local people who come in, and the way we get at that is HUD, the federal government, has a coordinated entry process. And so, we, through that process, we identify highest need, but identifying folks who select that they want to live in Fergus Falls. And so, they either have to have, like, a relative, like there's some reason they're coming here. Most often, it's because they're already here.
I just know my wife works in real estate, and, you know, when it comes down to it, whether you're mentally ill or whether you're not, there's always a certain percent that, you know, cause a lot of problems. And I just didn't want to see that outside entities would start pushing these into our communities, and then we would have to deal with the problem, and then we wouldn't be able to take care of our own people first. That was my only concern.
And I think it's shared by all of the service providers who will be partnering on this. So, I think you raise a good point and one that I think through our processes we can really address through the application process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Liz. Any other questions before we move on? Again, just want to say thank you to Michael, Deb, Liz, Kate, and Joe for joining us this evening, and we look forward to getting some more information and being part of a discussion as this project moves forward. Thank you all for joining us. Item number three under new business is a request for funds for the fireworks for the graduation. And we've received a letter from Dean Monkey from the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Andrew, did you want to comment? Bill, did you want to, all right, we'll call on Finance Director Bill Sommar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, you have that memo in front of you, the request from Principal Dean Monkey from our school district. And just as a reminder, we have budgeted $5,000 towards fireworks within the 2020 budget. $1,500 is for the Over the River Festival, and then $3,500 was for Summer Fest. So, some members of Summer Fest had brought up the idea of, you know, using this funds towards honoring the graduating class of 2020, kind of at the end of the ceremony on the 29th of May. So, we have this request from Principal Monkey requesting that. That is a public-purpose expenditure. We, you know, one, we could do it with Summer Fest, but since they're not going to be having that this year, the other option presented here would be the school district, and cities can provide funds to a school district. So, therefore, you know, we do have the legal authority to do it. So, wanted to bring that forward to you and see if you have, you know, the appetite for that and wish to see that reallocated for still fireworks, just for a different venue.
Thank you, Bill. And I spoke with both Summer Fest and Dean Monkey today. I think it's a great idea, and being that it's in the budget, being that that's the intended purpose of those funds, I support the effort, and I think it's a great idea. We can do that by a--
Just let them pass a resolution.
--a resolution authorizing the change in expenditures for that $3,500. Would someone like to offer that?
I would.
I'd like to offer that.
Krista and Brent.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Brent. Questions and comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Josephson.
Yeah.
Hicks.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hagberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. We will be adjourning to a closed session to consider real estate offer pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D05 Subsection D3C. Before that, miscellaneous announcements, I don't, I guess the only miscellaneous announcement I have is that a number of you on the call and a number in the council chambers need a haircut, so hopefully, we can get that accomplished before the next meeting. Anyone else have anything else to add? With that, we'll be adjourned to a closed session.